I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Common Council of the City of Platteville for Tuesday, September 26th at 7:00 PM. And we'll start with roll call.
Don Francis?
Here.
Barbara Stackhausen?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Ali Nichols?
Here.
Tom Knoll?
Here.
Catherine Westeby?
Here.
Barbara Doss?
Here.
All right, the first item this evening is a special presentation, the 2017 Community in Economic Development Award.
Good evening. I just wanted to take a moment to show the 2017 CEDA Award, Community Economic Development Award, for public-private partnership. This is an award that is sponsored by WEDA, the Wisconsin Economic Development Association, which is the association for economic development professionals throughout the state of Wisconsin. And they offer CEDAs in six different categories, of which a public-private partnership is one. And pleased and excited to announce that the City of Platteville and the Miners Development Group won the CEDA Award this year in that category for the library block project. And thank you to everybody that went to Madison to pick it up on our behalf. I know we had some tough competition, a project in Milwaukee, and I think a riverfront project in Chippewa Falls, so very exciting.
And thank you to all the community who got behind this project and made the project a reality, especially everybody who contributed to the fixture, furniture and
Equipment.
Equipment for the library. So it is wonderful. If you haven't had a chance to be in the library yet, you're missing a great, great building, so I hope you all take time to go visit that. Next is consideration, the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion or vote due to their routine nature of previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you would prefer a separate discussion in action. Council minutes from the September 12, 17, special and regular meetings, payment of bills, appointments to boards and commissions, there are two this evening, to the redevelopment authority board, Sheila Kelly, for a five-year term, and the council representative for the licensing committee, Tom Knoll is having difficulty making the time of that meeting, and so Barbara Stackhausen has offered to take over that position. So Barbara will be the council rep to the licensing committee. Licenses, temporary Class B license to sell fermented malt beverages to St. Augustine University Parish on Friday, September 29th, excuse me, from 5:00 PM until 11:59 PM. Also, one-year and two-year operator licenses to sell or serve alcohol, and also taxi driver licenses. Permits, a parade permit for UW Platteville Homecoming on Saturday, October 14th, starting at 10:00 AM. Street closing permit, also for UW Platteville on Saturday, October 14th, from 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM for the homecoming. Also, St. Augustine University Parish on Friday, September 29th, from noon until 11:59 PM for the parish festival. And the Free Methodist Church on Wednesdays, September 27th through May 30th, from 6:30 PM until 8:30 PM for children's activities. Also, walk-run permits, again UW Platteville for the Homecoming Hustle 2017 on Saturday, October 14th, and also UW Platteville, again, Homecoming Torch Run on Saturday, October 14th. And finally, resolution 1721 is in our packet proclaiming October 2017 as United Nations Month. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Francis?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Westeby?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any of you would like to speak in the future, we do ask that you fill out a small green sheet like this, it's on the table as you enter. We do have one person who's asked to speak, but it's on an issue that we're talking about later, and you would rather wait until then, Gary? Okay. Going on to reports in our packet, Board Commission Committee reports, Police and Fire Commission, Francis?
Nothing to add.
Water and Sewer Commission, Killian, Knoll, Stackhausen?
Nothing to add.
Nothing to add.
No addition.
Museum Board, Westeby?
Nothing to add.
Commission on Aging, Knoll?
Nothing to add.
Library Board, I have nothing to add. And Airport Commission, Doss?
Just to thank everybody for coming to the special session and tour that we had at the airport.
The first action item tonight is contract 1617, highway painting.
Howard?
Yes. This project would involve painting centerline striping and miscellaneous street markings on Water Street between Pine and Northside Drive, and potentially centerline and Cheryl markings on Main Street between Water and Chestnut. We opened bids, there were two bidders. The low bidder was Guideline Pavement from Rio. As I said, the base bid is for the Water Street markings, and the alternate bid is for Main Street. We have a $30,000 budget for this. I believe that we have enough in other savings in other locations, so that we could, in fact, do the base bid and alternate A for the bid price of $32,121.25. At the last meeting, council member Killian asked if Guideline had been awarded the contract before, and they had done the work in 2011 and '12. There were no issues with that contractor. So staff is recommending award of the base bid and alternate A.
Questions, anyone?
So the extra funding will come from your budget line?
We will absorb it from other budget lines, yes.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion that, are we ready? I make a motion that we award the highway painting contract to Guideline Pavement, contract 1617, including alternate A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Francis?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Westeby?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is vehicle replacement, the Platteville Senior Center, Uber Socks Auto Group.
Yes, as was presented last time, the Senior Center had explored options for replacing their bus, which is becoming fairly unreliable. The option that they came up with was to trade the bus in and additionally trade in a 2003 Dodge Caravan. When they were researching replacements, they determined that a minivan would be the best option to serve their needs. When they went out to research that or bid that out, they determined there was only one manufacturer still making that type of vehicle. So therefore, Uber Socks was who they approached to get a bid. Uber Socks presented a proposal, which basically exchanges both of those vehicles for a 2007 Dodge Caravan, along with a warranty. And then in addition to that, Uber Socks is willing to make a $1,000 donation to the Senior Center.
You mean a 2017, right?
Yes, I'm sorry. What did I, 2017 is what I meant, whatever I said.
Any question? Is there a motion?
I also move that we do the vehicle replacement for the Platteville Senior Center, Uber Socks Auto Group, as stated by Luke, and with the recommendations of the Senior Center staff.
Second. We have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Francis?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Westeby?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And thank Uber Socks, that's a very nice donation. Next is former Gates Hotel Building demolition or relocation.
Okay, the city's been working on the various steps to determine what to do with that building. The steps indicated in the memorandum of agreement, we've basically got to the point, there's no agreement to keep the building at its current location, so the two options left are to relocate the building or to demolish the building. Even though we've received no formal proposals regarding the relocation, the Historic Preservation Commission has been in contact with the developer, who has expressed some interest in relocating the building off the site. So essentially, at this point, they're requesting a delay on any decision regarding the demolition to give additional time to explore the option of relocating that building. The primary concern that the city has, as we've talked before, is we do have some deadlines to complete that work under the current grants that we received. I have sent requests out to WEDC and the Department of Administration regarding grant extensions. They've both indicated that we could apply for one, the staff members that I've contacted, it's not their decision, so they have to process it up the line a little bit, but they were affirmative that we could request such an extension. I'm working to try to get some additional information on how likely that would be and what kind of additional timeframe we would get, so I should have some more information, hopefully this week. The alternative, as I mentioned, is to proceed with the demolition. We had previously bid that project, and rural excavating was a little bitter for that project at $22,500. I also talked to them about the project. They don't have any concerns about delaying that demolition, they're actually very busy, and they're confident they can get the whole, all three buildings demolished in a week or two, so we do have some additional time to push that off until the next meeting. But without a grant extension, we will have to make a decision at that next meeting, for sure. Any questions?
I would maybe just add that since this report was written, we have received an email from the interested developer, who said that they're gathering additional information, and they hopefully will have something to us early next week with respect to a proposal.
So we have had one person asked to speak, Gary Prohaska.
While Gary's coming up, I'd just like to apologize to the public, our internet connection keeps going in and out, so they may have interruptions during this.
Anyway, my name's Gary Prohaska, I live at 280 Vision Street in Platteville, Wisconsin. I'm a member of the Historic Preservation Commission here in Platteville. As you know, the HPC has been working diligently to save the historic Gates Hotel under Section 106, and that process, and now we're in the process of proceeding through the MOA. I know you've received a number of communications, and just for the citizens of Platteville, I wanted to read the last communication that I had received. It was response to a communication that Karen Kurt had sent to Tobin and I, and Ed, carbon copy Joe Carroll, Ken Killian, David Nucio, and Adam Johnson. And Chip Brown had also received it. Chip Brown is the Senior Compliance Officer for the State of Wisconsin Historical Society, and says, "Thank you for these comments, Karen. We are all, we all recognize the city offered an RFP for relocation and reuse of the Gates Hotel." And that was the process that was done when they put out the request also for demolition. However, as we have discussed recently, in light of this current significant proposal to relocate and reuse the Gates Hotel, the potential benefit for saving the Gates Hotel, the intention of the provisions of our MOA, and the encouragement recently offered to move forward with this proposal, it is incumbent on all parties to ensure that the relocation backslash reuse proposal is sufficiently explored. This proposal is, by all appearances, the only chance that the Gates Hotel might be preserved. On its face, this proposal is workable. Absent a compelling need related to the federal undertaking for immediate demolition of the Gates Hotel, I believe that if necessary to carry out this relocation reuse project, the demolition contract should be delayed. I think that we all agree that preserving the building for reuse would be a huge win for all parties. In large part, this is why we all engaged in the consultation and review of this federal action. Thank you for all your continued hard work on this very complicated and challenging project. Sincerely, Chip Brown." Anyway, the Preservation Commission did want to make sure that we had developers that truly were interested, this was started in August. They did comply with a written confirmation that, yes, they were interested. Tobin Murdoch and Adam Johnson are one of the teams, and it sounds like one of the other developers may come on board financially, I don't know. But anyway, we have two people that are interested. They have reviewed the building, the Preservation Commission met last Thursday, and Childs was able to come down during that time when we had the meeting, and Adam Johnson did have to leave to let him review the building. He was the only person that was able to come down from Childs Contract Movers. So he came down, his team has to come down supposedly, to my understanding, to take a second look at the process of where to move it and things like that. So the city has given two lots as tentative places in writing to place this hotel. So in other words, the process looks like one of the lots is possible to move it. I did talk to Adam Johnson this afternoon, well, early this evening, before this meeting, and he said he hadn't been contacted by Childs yet, but he's hoping to hear from him soon. That's the one thing that's kind of holding everything up. But anyway, in talking with Chip Brown about this process, which was before I received this letter, I'd asked him, and he thought it would be appropriate to table the demolition, at least till now. I had requested to find out if it was also possible to have this time extended, and I did give the option of a possibility of taking the $22,500 and putting it into escrow. And David Nucio had also suggested the possibility in a prior communication of that it would be appropriate to use the demolition money for the move. And that could go into an escrow, which then could either be transferred to the move, or if the move failed, then it would go to the demolition of the building. So that was very doable to their understanding. Also, in the process, there was a suggestion by David Nucio that possibly the developer could also assist in the moving of the building. That has not been pursued yet. We wanted to make sure that the developer that is now on board to move the building, it would be possibly move it. So anyway, we were told by Childs Contract Movers, yes, it is possibly moved. So we do know it can be moved, it's just we have to find out what it's going to cost. And I know Adam Johnson and Tobin Murdoch are working on that right now. So that's the only information I have, and supposedly, they're going to try and make the preservation meeting this Thursday at 6:00 in the council chambers. So hopefully, maybe we'll even know something by then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I just make a clarification on that? I did request from the WDC some clarification regarding that $22,500. Putting that money towards the relocation would not be an eligible expense, so that is not an option for that funding.
I would make just an additional clarification, that in the RFP, we had noted that there might be the possibility of relocating the building to one of the city lots owned downtown based on a previous council discussion, but ultimately, that is, of course, your decision.
Okay, Joe, and you're saying that we could delay this decision until the 10th of October?
Correct. And then depending on...
But there has to be a decision on that night.
Unless we get some reply regarding the grant extensions, then I think we need to make a decision.
Okay, I'll make a motion to table this item to October 10th.
Second to the motion.
Have a motion and a second to table, and we'll vote.
Francis?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Knoll?
No.
Westeby?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Just clarification, is that the last date, then? We won't bring it to the table again?
I think unless we get word that the grant deadlines have been extended, I think we need to make a decision on that date to stay within those timelines.
On that date, okay. I will follow through with that, then.
All right, next is fire station driveway?
Yes. As part of the Ellen Street project, we have replaced and upgraded the storm sewer on Main Street in front of the fire station. And one of the issues that we have is that the concrete slabs used as the driveway to the fire station are in fair condition, but the joints are poor and deteriorated. I have a photo that should be in the packet to show this. The fire department needs to relocate their trucks during the storm sewer work and during the pavement work in the street, so if we were to replace the driveway sections, it would minimize any impact on the fire department operations. We asked for a proposal to do any additional work, and we got a cost of $15,300. The original project was under budget, and we were intending to use those funds for the Third Street parking lot. At the last time we discussed this, the council's intent was to carry over that funds to spring 2018. So what we're saying now is, staff is proposing to use up to $15,300 of that original savings to fund the replacement of the driveway pavement, and that would mean that we would need to make sure that there's additional funding put back in during the 2018 budget process to fully fund the Third Street parking lot project. The reason why I'm saying up to $15,300 is because there could be potential additional savings in that Elm Street, or Ellen Street project, and we would, of course, use those savings first before dipping into the carryover money.
Questions, anyone?
This park, this entrance was not replaced when we did Main Street? Did we do Main Street all the way to the museum, or just to the bottom of Main?
We, the 2008 project for Main Street was Chestnut to Water. That section of Main Street was done in the 80s, from what I understand. I'm not sure when the fire station driveway was done.
Well, I agree that the picture paints an ugly, I mean, it's, there's certainly no, I believe that it needs to be replaced. I'm just a little bit concerned that, and I realize that we said the Third Street was going to come out of that money that was left for that project, but now we've kind of set an expectation for Third Street, and we aren't in CIP budgeting for 2018 yet. Yet we're saying we'll have to include this in the 2018 CIP. So I'm just kind of concerned about trying to obligate money for a 2018 CIP that we haven't even discussed, and setting expectations for the completion of Third Street, and saying that we could probably do it for what we had set aside if we had bid it earlier, so. I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts?
I do, Howard, correct me if I'm wrong, but I do believe that there will probably be a line item for that parking lot, anyway, because I don't think our original estimates were quite on the mark.
Were realistic.
Yeah, was that incorrect?
Yeah, the scope of the project changed from our initial estimates to what was developed for bidding. I do think that the costs will come in lower than what the bid was, but not all the way down because of some of the extra scope items that were included in the project.
Howard, just for my own thinking or looking at it, how thick does that concrete need to be?
The plan is that if we replace this, it would be eight-inch-thick concrete, which is basically the same thickness as the street. A normal driveway would be, need to be six inches.
Thank you.
Who would be doing this work?
It would be done through the construction contract with Rural Construction, the concrete subcontractor is Augelli, and they've done our, a lot of our concrete pavement work recently.
What has caused the problem at the joint, salt?
It's a combination of a number of things, age a little bit, but probably in the design, the, I don't believe that there were any dowels placed in there between the joints. The joints themselves were not sealed to keep water and other items out of there, so over time, as water and other things got into the joints, it helped accelerate any deterioration of those joints. It seems as though concrete that was placed in the early to mid 80s had problems with the mix. If you remember, we had the same problem on Main Street prior to, prior to this last reconstruction, and Bonson Street before our reconstruction project. So I believe this was done kind of in that same timeframe.
And does this bid also include, then, replacement all the way to the street, so that sidewalk would be replaced?
Yes, yeah.
So it would be from the doors all the way to the street?
That's correct.
Do they use, would they use rerod in this?
Yes. And we also seal the joints to help prevent the water from getting in.
Will this bid cover all those expenses?
Yes, that was the estimate that the contractor gave us.
And does that include the side, along the west side of the building, or does it stop at the west end of the building? And what they use as a parking lot, I guess, is what you might say.
It does not include that asphalt parking lot on the west side.
In other words, I believe I'm looking at asphalt at the bottom.
Correct.
So there's...
We would, we would match in with a little matching of asphalt right along where the new concrete would go, but that would be it. We wouldn't be replacing the rest of that asphalt driveway and parking area on the west side of the building.
Is there a storm cover in the middle? Is that what I'm seeing? A storm?
Um...
Or is that just something else I'm just imagining?
Actually, I think that's a sanitary sewer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh.
So any concrete work shouldn't bother that?
No, no.
Any other comments? I agree that it's unexpected, but it also seems it would be a prudent time to take care of this problem while they... of this problem while they're doing the street project. So is there a motion?
I move to approve the use of approximately 15,300 to replace the driveway pavement on the north side of the fire station with the funding coming from the 2017 Third Street Parking Lot Project.
I second. Motion and a second. We'll vote.
Francis?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
See? Das?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Those are our only action items, so we'll go on to information and discussion, donation of property west of Dog Park on Valley Road.
Yeah, the, the owners of the property at 860 East Business Highway 151, it's next to Four Seasons Landscaping. They had actually just got an approval to divide that property into two lots and an outlot. The outlot is for the portions of that property that lie north of the Roundtree branch, basically between the Roundtree and Valley Road. They had submitted a proposal as part of this approval to donate that outlot to the city. Since the, the stream kind of separates that part of the property from the remainder of their property, it's really difficult for them to use that. It's kind of a unusual shape, even though it's almost three quarters of an acre, it's an unusual shape. It's in a flood plain, so it's really not buildable, but it does contain, or the, the trail crosses across that, that property. It is contiguous to the city's property where the Dog Park and the Storm Otter Pond is located as well as other recreational facilities. So they thought it would be a logical property that the city might want to own as far as those recreational facilities. So they have requested that the city consider a donation of that property or accept a donation of that property. It, it does seem like a logical request. It doesn't provide them any good, but it does provide some benefit to the community as far as the recreational purposes. So that is a request and it will be on for action at the next meeting. Any questions?
What are the increases in expenses? Mowing the area or keeping down the weeds or what?
There would, there would be some, there would be some additional expenses in some of that. The Platteville Community Arboretum mows a swath along both sides of the trail anyways. So there's going to be minimal additional maintenance between the trail and the road. There's, a lot of it is up close to the road in that area anyways. So there's, there's not a whole lot of extra maintenance for us.
Can that be turned into parking eventually? Parking for the trail?
It's, there's-
I'm just asking.
There's really only a small triangle that would be between where the, where the tanks were from IAS, kinda to the, to the west, if you will. There's not a whole lot of room and it's not really contiguous with the, the Dog Park parking, so I'm not sure how efficient of a parking space that would be.
Well, people that use the trail can go up and park by rural, so it's not too bad.
Any other questions or comments? All right, Senior Center update.
I'm the manager of the Senior Center. I just wanted to take some time tonight to update you all on where we're at and also acknowledge a lot of the folks who have stepped up and helped us out in really big ways throughout this whole process. So the big news is that we've moved. We are now over at Owe Gray School. Last week was our first week of operation there. We're getting settled in, getting boxes put away and it's going really well thus far. We're neighbors in there with Head Start and Family Connections, so there's a lot of, it's so nice seeing the little kids run around and our participants love that as well. So there's a lot of opportunity there for intergenerational programming. We were able to move quickly and relatively inexpensively due to the efforts of first and foremost, my staff, the, I want to say tenacious Bill Richard and the superhuman Jill Goffanet. Anybody out there knows Jill, you know what I'm talking about. There's an amazing group of volunteers who help out with the meal site portion of the program, help the marvelous meal site manager Lindsay Tabor do what she needs to do for a critical service in this community. You know, they serve meals both on site and to an alarming number of seniors who are homebound, who you just never see in your day-to-day lives. So thanks to them, the founders of the Platteville Area Senior Services, Gary Pothauer, Bill Kramer, John Klosterman. We received a lot of help from the UWP Pioneers Pay It Forward Program who somehow managed to convince 14 or 15 college freshmen to spend the day before class to come over and help us lug everything from cribbage boards to furniture over to the new place. So that was amazing. During that time, a few members of the community, Dave Plemer, Rich, I believe it's Knoll, I'm sorry, Rich, if I'm getting that wrong, and Jim Coats donated their time and labor in trucks and trailers. Bill's Plumbing unexpectedly lent us the labor of a couple of their employees. And finally, we brought in the Calvary, so to speak. The Streets Department came in to do the heavy lift, the literal heavy lifting of some of our stuff, coolers and freezers and stuff like that. So they were absolutely great. We got to move into a space that was already greatly improved due to the donated, discounted, and/or skilled professional efforts of, again, Mr. Gary Pothauer, Platteville Public Schools, Pat and Melody Mergan, Bill's Plumbing, Schmidt Electrical, ProBuild, which I believe may now be called Builders First Source. Is that right? And a man who I've learned knows how to get things done, Mr. Kirk Timlin was a big help in all that. We've received financial support from a list of people that's far too long to list here, but I would like to point out a few folks. The Ray and Kay Eckstein Foundation gave us a very generous grant, the Broadbeck family, the McCartney family, the Shirley Sedgwick family, and I would like to say hi to Shirley if she's out there, Platteville Community Fund, and local service organizations. I'd also like to acknowledge the ongoing efforts of, what do you call her, unstoppable Deb Browning, who's been raising, organizing a fundraiser for us, which I believe will take place on October 13th out at the Country Club. Platteville Public Schools have been so accommodating and proactive in all this. So of course Superintendent Valenza, Chris Brown, Becky Hines. I want to thank Bill Wagner and Brad Kettler also. Those have been our main interactions at the new space. They've been great. And then, you know, finally, I think we've been there seven days now and I've seen more brand-new faces in those seven days than the last seven months at the old place. People are turning out, making inquiries. They're really curious, curious about what they can do, what kind of classes they can teach, what kind of offerings they can help with. That's been incredibly reassuring because that's really been our aim in this whole thing is to evolve from an organization exclusively serving seniors to one that's inclusive of all age groups in an effort to serve not only seniors, but really the community at large. So I am thrilled with the progress we've made thus far. I am confident in the ambition of those involved to continue this project on until we've created something that's truly valuable and a great resource for everybody in the area who wants to give it a shot. I, I see this being something that will last decades and I could not be more thrilled with the progress that they've made, taking a, I think, as Tom has mentioned before, sort of lemons into lemonade situation. And it's been very, very heartening to me to be a part of. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. I do believe we have a tour scheduled or tentatively scheduled on the third, so you guys can see where we're at firsthand and I want to get your input as well and your vision for this space, so. Anything?
Any questions or comments? I would say congratulations. Thank you for all your efforts, John. I know that-
My pleasure.
And for all the other people who helped and are continuing to help. It's a great community effort again. It's really great.
It really is.
And I know they're not here, but they might deserve a round of applause because this has been a, just a phenomenal effort.
Absolutely, yes.
Thanks. That concludes our evening. If someone makes a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, a second, and we'll vote.
Francis?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Westeby?
Yes.
Das?